I would like to ask if you're willing and able to stand for an invocation and likewise, remain standing for the pledge to the flag.
Dear Lord, we come to you this morning asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of the community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that will affect the citizens of Henry County. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sure at nine o'clock with the regular public meeting, Henry County Board of Commissioners, Tuesday, March of 4th, come to order. Will somebody move that we consider accepting the agenda as published?
So moved.
Have a motion to accept the agenda from District Three?
Second.
Have a second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Next, on the consent agenda, first item is the resolution question approval of a second amendment to FY 2014 ARC contract. And it, there's no new monies involved in this. It's a request and approval of the second amendment, which the council, I mean, the board would all do. So we have a resolution in the book that's labeled a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners regarding the second amendment to the aging sub grant contract with the Alana Regional Commission. And it, Henry County will receive a reduction in funding $55,107. So what the amendment to the agreement is that because of the economy, they're gonna reduce us by $55,000 a year. And so we're gonna have to accept that. The second one is a resolution question approval of a streetlight district in the Green Veil subdivision. And we have a resolution that says, resolution approving the request for the creation and a new streetlight district for Green View subdivision located in the Willow Lane Green View Drive. And what this does, it, the, all the owners request the streetlight. The vendor, which could be Georgia Power EMC or Snap and Show, will go in and put the required streetlights out, send the monthly bill or the yearly bill to the county. The county takes that and puts it on the taxes once a year. So it could be anywhere from $21 to $25 a year. So the people that get the benefit of this on the streetlights pay for it. The public does not pay for any streetlights. The other item is another resolution approving the streetlights for a Philcrest subdivision. And we have a resolution, a request for approving the creation of a new streetlight district for Philcrest, a state subdivision located on Jackson Road. Having said that, will somebody move? We approve the consent agendas items as published.
So moved.
Do we have a motion from District Three?
Second.
Second from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. This ends the consent agenda part. Next, we'd like to recognize Henry County Convention and Visitors Bureau, Laura Luka, Henry County, CVA. Yes, so. Good morning, and we're ready for your presentation.
Good morning, thank you. And I will not take too much of your time. Before you, I give, have given each of you a folder with information. Not gonna do a formal presentation projector or anything, but I have included those slides in your presentation. So if you have want some detailed information or some examples of some of the things that I'm gonna talk about today, you have those in front of you. I am Laura Luka. I'm the Director of Tourism for the Henry County Convention and Visitors Bureau. And the way law is structured in Georgia, each city and county has the opportunity to levy a hotel motel tax of a certain percentage. Currently, Henry County levies a 5% hotel motel tax. What the law states is that a certain percentage of that, at 5%, it's 40%, has to go back to a nonprofit organization set aside for the promotion of tourism. And Henry County has elected for the Convention and Visitors Bureau under the auspices of the Henry County Chamber to be that organization. So that is, that is what I, I am here to serve, to facilitate how that money is invested on behalf of Henry County. And the laws that structure how that money is spent are pretty specific. So in your packet, you are gonna see one slide that talks about the laws themselves, as well as a slide that has kind of a grid of showing some of the expenses that are and are not allowed, because they can seem kinda nitpicky sometimes. So sometimes it helps just to have that, that explanation in front of you. We are a subdivision of the chamber, but we also have our own, excuse me, we all have our own board, as well as our own financials, and our own that is kept completely separate, audited as necessary. Reports are given to you each year, as well as to the Department of Community Affairs that detail out how that money was spent. You're gonna find a copy of that report in your folder as well that details exactly for what, in what areas that was spent and for, for what ads or what promotional material. In addition to this yearly report that I come and give, as well as that report, you also have a representative on the Convention and Visitors Board of Directors, and it's Melissa Robinson. And so she will receive a monthly financial report, as well as a monthly program overview of what's going on. So I'm more than willing to come and talk to anybody who's interested about what's going on in the day to day. But if you have some questions about the structure, the finances, Melissa should be able to answer those questions. And then talk a little bit about the economics and what has kind of happened over the last year. In 2012, which is the most recent information that we have available in terms of tourism spending, tourists spent $215 million in Henry County in 2012. And that is a, over a $10,000, $10 million increase from 2011. So it's good news. We're continuing to see the tourist spending go up, hotel motel occupancy go up. And we're seeing that in resident wages went up. It was $46 million in resident wages in 2012, $6.39 million in local taxes, and eight point, almost $8.5 million in state taxes. So what all that equates to is basically what I say every year is a tourism tax relief. This says that $216 was basically saved by residents because of tourist spending. And that says that they didn't have to put forth that money to keep the tax digest up. What we've done in the past year to promote Henry County, just wanna touch on a few of our big things. We've done a lot, but we did our mobile site. We've seen more and more people are visiting from a mobile site, they're also planning on a site. There was a study done by a mobile marketer that said that there was more toothbrushes, or actually, excuse me, more mobile phones in the world than there were toothbrushes. And that doesn't seem surprising to me when you look at the statistics. Basically, it seemed like every phone had a mobile phone subscription, whereas maybe not everyone had a toothbrush. So we, the importance of why we were optimizing that site is obvious. And so you'll, you can see examples of what that site looks like. If you have a smartphone, you can go to visithenrycountygeorgia.com, and you will see that phone should automatically redirect. We also, in 2012, developed a series of five videos. They were one-minute videos featuring different things about Henry County. What we did is we shortened those to 30-second commercials. And so if you were watching cable networks in certain areas, this year you would have seen some of those commercials on, say, if you're watching the Braves, we did an entire package with the Braves. So if you were watching in Rockdale County, perhaps, you would have seen a Henry County commercial come during the Braves game. So they were on 11 different networks from April to September in 2013. We also have seen from our web analytics that people are searching for wedding-related venues. We had over 7,000 searches for wedding-related content on our site last year. So we really expanded our wedding marketing, trying to make, try and take advantage of that. Henry County has more than 20 venues that are appropriate for weddings of all sizes. So we were trying to capitalize on that, as we've done some different ads and some web marketing. And we're gonna continue to do that in 2014. We also, social media is huge, mobile marketing is huge, but social media is a, is a big part of that. So we continue to maintain our Facebook page, as well as our YouTube channel. We know that YouTube is the second largest search engine after Google, so it's important to keep that content fresh. We also added a Pinterest board, as well as a Instagram account, because Instagram is definitely rapidly growing among the younger generation. So we want to make sure that we're staying with the times, if you will. We also developed a new visitors guide. We do this every year. As you can see in your packet, it's a brand new. It features our very unique and only place in the world, the lion, tiger, and bear. So we really excited about that. This year, we are gonna pay for the, pay for the guide almost completely out of ad sales. So that's very exciting. We've actually added pages to the guide and still able to reduce our cost. And as, as every year happens, each of our cities and our counties gets a free full-page ad in that guide for being a participating member. So encourage you to look through that, and you may find some things you didn't even know were here. We have a lot of just wonderful things, and it's a really wonderful piece. We also really continue to work very closely with the Parks and Rec Department. I'm sure I don't have to tell you what an important asset the Parks and Rec and the tournaments that they bring in are. In 2013, it was the third straight year we were able to host the single-weekend largest amateur sports tournament in the country, probably in the world, with the Super NIT. It'll happen next weekend, actually. Again, we're hoping for it to be the fourth straight year. Last year, we had 545 teams. So if you think about that, that's no less than about 6,000 to 7,000 players and coaches coming in, not counting their parents, or their grandparents, or their siblings. So it is a huge economic driver for Henry County, that tournament specifically, but all of the tournaments. Because of that, we continue to go to the USSA, which is the United States Specialty Sports Association Convention. This year, while we were at that show, we were told we were gonna be given a second Super NIT. And so the first one, the one that's in this happening next weekend, said about 545 teams. They're thinking that the spring one will, or excuse me, the summer one, will start off with about 300 teams. So a humongous, technical term there, boon for Henry County. And they actually, while we were sitting in the meeting with all these CVBs from around the state, we were sitting there with Gulf Shores, Baton Rouge, other places, and they called Henry County out specifically in that meeting, saying that we host the single-weekend amateur, largest amateur sports tournament. So that was a very proud moment for Henry County. Because these tournaments are such a big deal, we are working on sponsorship packages that we can enhance the spectator experience. The teams are here, they're here to play, and there's not a whole lot you can do for them while they're on field, particularly for these Super NIT weekends. So what we are looking to do is to have these sponsorship packages that will allow us to do some things for the parents and the siblings on site that we can't do out of our current, out of our current budget base because of what the hotel motel locks, well, law allows us to do. So we're doing, doing some of that, and hopefully to sponsor at least six of the big tournaments this year. We also continue to be the camera-ready source, and we've seen a lot of really big-name productions film in Henry County in the last year, and continuing to see new. Next Sunday, actually, will be the opening of Resurrection, which was filmed at a lot of locations around Henry County. So that's exciting. So I'm excited to watch that show and see, see Henry County. But we're continuing to see that just change, continue, flourish, and grow in 2012, and we have, excuse me, in 2013, and we look for more in 2014. Just some new things we have coming up in 2014. We are working on a brand-new website. It's been about three years since we did our last site, and that seems so recent, particularly when you spend months and months doing it. But it's like a dinosaur in tourism website ages. So we're really excited about what we have coming up for our new site. It'll be even more user-friendly and more interactive, kind of more in the style of what people are doing. It is our front line of defense for people searching for Henry County, so we wanna make sure that it is a, a very user-friendly, interactive site. We also, as I said, that YouTube is the second-largest search engine after Google. We wanna make sure that people are finding really rich content when they go to our YouTube channel. We're looking to start a video program where we do feature a tourism partner each week or each month. The exact specifics are still being nailed down of how that will do. So when they go to YouTube and do searches, they'll find Henry County. It'll just keep coming up, and they'll find this really great information about Henry County. We also are looking to capitalize on the film-related tourism. We have the industries coming in and doing the filming, and now there's people out there looking to see the sites that these places are, that these film shoots have been done. So we're working on a, a driving film tour that hopefully will be evolved into something a little bit more detailed as it, as it develops. So those are what we have going on in 14, and what we have been working on in 13. So at this time, if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you so much. Next, we have requests from Friends of Family, Exhibit Four. And there's a resolution in the event we need it, and it's allowing the Friends of the Nash Farm Battlefield to erect a monument. Good morning. State your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Morning Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. My name is William G. Dodd. I live at 156 Cotton Indian Creek Road, McDonnell, Georgia. I'm here representing Friends of Nash Farm Battlefield today to ask consent of the Commissioners, Board of Commissioners' approval to erect a monument there at Nash Farm Park to recognize the soldiers that were either killed, captured, or mortally wounded during the Battle of Kilpatrick's Raid during the August 22nd through 24th of 1864. This is the 150th anniversary year of that event, and we would like to, you know, erect a monument to recognize those that lost their life. In the package that I sent to the Commission, it shows a photograph of a black granite monument. The monument company that's doing this is Sammy Robinson Monuments out of Tallapoosa, Georgia. He specializes in doing military parks. The monument, the granite itself is coming from Elveston, Georgia. So it is, it is a homegrown Georgia product that'll be on display there. It's four foot width by nine foot in height, eight foot high. It'll be out of the ground, one foot in the ground, and it's approximately eight inches thick, and it'll be engraved on both sides. It will have the Confederate soldiers on one side, the Union soldiers on the other side. It will be a lighted monument to, again, recognize those that were either killed during the battle itself. And this raid extended literally from South Fulton County all the way up through Henry County. So there will be names on there that were killed in other places other than Henry County.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
I'd make a statement is that I've had a chance to go out there and have, talked to the Friends of Nash Farms, and also y'all, y'all gave me kind of a, a kit of all the data and documents, and it's really amazing stuff. I mean, anybody's not been out there to look at all the items that have been excavated from the site. I know every time that y'all do any type of work on the property, you have to have kind of his, an archaeologist there to make sure we, you know, don't misplace any of the bullets and other things that are coming. It's really a gem to have in the county. I just really think it's an asset to our community, and I appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'd just have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'd heard from several about the names on it. Are we 100% sure that we're putting the correct names on it? I mean, I, I just, before we put something in place, I have no issues with the monument at all. I just wanna be sure that the, that if we say somebody died there at that site, I wanna be sure that that's actually correct. Have you, has your group looked into that?
My, my group, and particularly the individual that is the major source of my information, between man-hours and money, has spent over $50,000 researching the names that will go on the monument. As I stated in there, all the people listed on the monument did not die in Henry County. They died during the raid, or they were captured during the raid and died in a prison camp as a result of being captured during that raid. There was also several that were mortally wounded that died at other locations at later date. I'll give you an example of one. There was one that died onboard ship after being released from Andersonville Prison in February of 1865. But his death records specifically indicate he died of wounds that were received on August the 20th, 1864. It would be like, as I use as an analogy to some of the groups that I talk to, is like when you're building a monument to the Dewills Raiders that took place during World War II. You wouldn't just list the ones that were shot down over Japan, you'd also list the ones that crashed in China and other places that didn't make it back. And it's the same way we're commemorating the raid that took place. And like I say, it took place from South Fulton County all the way up through Henry County. The last action took place here in Henry County, right there at Mount Carmel Road and Jonesboro Road is where the last action took place, where the last, and then the next day, after they camped there on Highway 20, right there at Cotton Indian River, one of the soldiers drowned crossing the river, which he's also listed on the monument in there. So it, it covers all different aspects of the people that were lost during that raid, not just in Henry County.
How many of your soldiers actually died on the Nash Farm property?
All I can tell you, Commissioner, is that during the grave, when they were recovering the bodies in 1865, when they were, there is five bodies recorded as being recovered from Nash Farm. Now, those would be the Union soldiers. The Confederate soldiers, we had, I think it was four or five Confederate soldiers that died there at Nash Farm. So all total, we only know of about 10 that died there on Nash Farm. Now, as far as wounded, we don't know.
Now, the actual battle took place at Lovejoy Station. What's the proximity from, you know, Nash Farms to Lovejoy Station?
Okay, again, on this event, this is a cavalry action. On August the 20th, that particular day, at approximately 12:00 AM, the battle started. If you were sitting there at Bay Breeze Restaurant, looking out towards the railroad track, you'd be looking at the area where the battle actually started at that morning around, right at noon time, about 12:00 AM. By 1:00 or 2:00 that afternoon, the battle had moved from that location to where the Crawford Dorsey House was located at, right there at Freeman Road and Jonesboro Road. The battle had moved up to there. By the time the battle was at that location, the Union soldiers were surrounded on three sides. They were fighting on, both on their front flank, their right flank, and to the rear. So they knew at that point in time, they had to escape, and their only route of escape at that point in time, they felt, was coming east on the Jonesboro Road towards McDonnell. The Confederate troops had formed a line there at Nash Farm to cut off their escape. But again, it was a weak line, because it was only about 300 strong at that point in time, as opposed to an opposing force of 4,500. So they overrun the Confederate troops there at Nash Farm. They continued from Nash Farm. That took place around 2:20 in the afternoon on August the 20th. By 3:00, they were there at Mount Carmel Road and Walnut Creek. The Union troops formed a rear guard action at that location, and the battle continued on at that point, again, until actually God intervened in the battle at that point in time, because heavy rains came down and Walnut Creek flooded. When Walnut Creek flooded, and the Confederate troops couldn't get across to give chase, the Union troops withdrew, and that was the last part of the action. So it's a move, because it's a cavalry event, it's a moving event in there.
When did the county actually acquire Nash Farms?
Nash Farm was purchased in 2005.
Now, if the county, if the, if Nash Farms was purchased in 2005, was, why wasn't this research done before that date?
A lot of research was done prior to that.
Well, Nash Farms, then how come we didn't purchase the, because the Civil War, you know, happened a long time ago. So why, why did we just move in 2005 to partner with, with the, with Nash Farms, the Friends of Nash Farms?
Well, Friends of Nash Farm came as a result, came a result as the county purchasing the property. Okay? When the county purchased the property, there was an advisory group that was put together to how to best utilize the park. And that was a group of about 40 individuals made up of people from all over Henry County. That group, again, you know, gave suggestions to the county on how to best utilize the park. When that group was dissolved, then Friends of Nash Farm was formed at that point in time to continue to operate and help preserve the history there of Nash Farms. Friends of Nash Farm didn't occur until after the county was purch, had purchased the park.
And let me just add one more question. How did the county come to acquiring Nash Farms? If somebody, somebody was here at that time can explain how we came to acquire that property, because I was told that it was a subdivision or a proposed subdivision.
I think we had but one here at that time, and that'd be Commissioner Holmes. Was you here during the purchase of the acquisition, eminent domain of Nash Farm? Were you, you was on board with that, right? He just asked a question, how we got it.
Yeah, how do, I was just asking, how did we come to?
Okay, so nobody was here at that time?
It was prior to making.
Tommy, you were, I think you were here.
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
Tommy, weren't you, weren't you working here?
I was. I was executive assistant. What they did, they used eminent domain and went to the court, and they.
So why did they use eminent domain?
The courts told the county to pay, if I'm not mistaken, Max Price Jr., 8.2 million for 207 acres. Now, beyond that, I wasn't part of the negotiating, I wasn't part of the eminent domain, I just know that I was here.
Do you know the whole story?
I know what?
The whole story regarding how it was acquired?
I can tell you, I can give you a paraphrase if you won't hold me to it.
Does any of that have to do with this monument?
I think, I think, no, no. The reason, the reason why I'm, the reason why I'm asking is because I think that, you know, you know, the battle actually took place at Lovejoy Station. So that might be a better area to honor those soldiers that, that were in that, that were in that battle.
I would respectfully disagree in the fact that if you've been to the museum and you've looked at the items that have actually been excavated on the property, and then also, I thought, the thing that was interesting, that Bill brought to my attention, that they didn't have, I think when the property was acquired in 2005, it was found later, is actually the submission of Mr. Nash to the government for reimbursement for all the damage done to the property from the battle. I mean, that was pretty interesting stuff. I mean, and, and I think it's very good to point out to the public, this is not glorifying one side or the other. This is not something, this pays respect to, this is a historical site. It's got paid homage to both sides, the Union as well as the Confederacy. And it's, it's not to make any statements. I'm actually pretty proud at Nash Farms. The event center's pretty much rented out every weekend for weddings and other things, correct? Is it?
That's correct. Kinda give you an idea of the activity that we have at Nash Farm, just through the museum itself, we have on average of 3,000 to 4,000 visitors a year that come through the museum, specifically there to view the Civil War history that's, and also the family life history. We don't just depict Civil War history, we also depict the family life in Henry County during the 1860 period in there.
You all have a number of fun runs as well.
I mean, the property, mud runs, fun runs, 5Ks.
All of the above. We have, yeah, we have activity, well, to tell you, I have one Saturday that's still available for 2014 that I haven't booked for an event, and that's December the 29th. So, I mean, we have activities every weekend there at Nash Farm. We have a lot of weddings, and when we have weddings there, you know, we have anywhere from 100 to 200 to 300 people there, which are also there not only for the wedding, but they enjoy the park itself. We have scouting events there, we have church events there, and we have memorial events there at Nash Farm. So it's a multi-use park.
And I think, you know, and I understand where Commissioner Holmes is coming from. And believe me, none of us up here on the board love debt, and we don't like necessarily having, you know, $8 million probably was not ideal. But now that we own this property, let's do the best we can with this property, turn it into an asset, which it has become for the community. I mean, I, I go to Chick-fil-A, I'm sure everybody in the crowd pretty much tries to Chick-fil-A, and I couldn't help but notice they have campouts now as well. I noticed I was, took pride in saw that it was done at Nash Farms. We're just trying to maximize our assets. We can't control what the previous boards have done here, but I think we owe it to our citizens to try to maximize what we do have to, to the county, to make sure we're giving the citizens everything we possibly can. And I, I appreciate the Friends of Nash Farms coming up with this concept and not asking the county for a dime, because this is not costing, this monument would not cost the county a dime, would it?
No money whatsoever would be county money.
Y'all are raising this independent of us. Yeah, y'all are raising this independent of us.
That's correct. There was four, uh, major groups that donated the money for the monument.
Okay. Well, with, with that said, I'd, I'd make the, I'd make the motion to, to approve the resolution that's presented.
Have a motion for District Two?
I'll say.
Second for District Three, any further discussion? Uh, I'm gonna make some comments on the significant interest that the chair has. Number one is, we all know that the issue's not going away. It's, uh, that one particular purchase somewhat divided, uh, Henry County, uh, more so than I've ever seen. Now, the deal is, I concur with, uh, the distinguished, uh, Commissioner from District Two. Uh, we own it, it's here. Now, what I would like to do, we've got three groups. We've got the group that's, uh, Friends of Nash Farm, we've got another group that's ninety percent with the Friends of the Nash Farm, but they have some, some differences as to different things, like names of people actually died. Then we have another group that's, uh, that's adamantly opposed of, of the, not the history part, but any government involvement in celebrating something that they really don't think it was appropriate. But that's neither here nor there. Now, having said that, uh, when I did work for the county, they went around for several years about the, uh, creation and the construction of the Wall of Honor. And if you can imagine, it, it, we, we moving along these si- these same lines here.
Yes, sir.
So Chairman Harper got ready to, to verify all the, the wars and casualties and you name it, and you go over there and it is a, a million times more names on that board than will be on this four by nine. Okay? We recognized that there would be some controversial issues on anything we put there, and we didn't want to create our own problem. So when Chairman Harper, um, uh, instructed me to verify within twenty-four hours, every date and every casualty on there, there was one group that, that had opposition to several groups, which one was the Vietnam, that was the biggest one. And, and it goes into what you say, they, even though they got shot over there and they died in New York, they, they didn't consider that a casualty and, but anyway, uh, through the course of, excuse me, twenty-four hours, the, the two groups basically, based on documentation, come together, and, and some didn't really think this was okay, and some didn't think that. But anyway, the two groups got together, and the stuff that's on the board now is, is accurate as three people, myself and the other two groups, could put on there. And once we etched them on there, it is not an issue.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now, this is why, when I had a meeting with the Nash Farms, I suggested that you meet with this other party, because they had some, apparently some concerns about some of the names, not all the names. Now, keep in mind, uh, in, in order to try to foster some issue that we could see coming, is I suggested that your group meet with this group and come to some compromise. And at the end of the day, I'd rather some names be on there that somebody's not particularly happy with, or take some off that somebody's not particularly happy with. But the deal is, the Nash Farm battlefield is always going to be an issue. I mean, it's just the nature of the beast. Now, having said that, anything that we do, we don't need to add fuel to the fire, and we don't need to take, uh, take the, the jest out of something, a, a monument that's going to honor somebody, and something like the, the Wall of Honor, that honors everybody, and everybody's on board with it. So I'm just saying is, do you see any wiggle room to where the, the, the two groups, as far as the names, could be, uh, get to the point? Because otherwise, it, now, if it can't, if you meet, you can't resolve it, then it will be what it's gonna be. But if you could take it, the group, and, and compromise on, on some of the, the, the names that would be etched, then once this board approves it, then it won't be an issue. It may be other issues someplace, but it won't be that issue. The, the, and I just wanted to, uh, make that, uh, comment and ask if, uh, has the Friends, uh, reached out to this group, and have y'all had conversation? And, and I do know that you had the, uh, the paperwork, because in that meeting, I, I gave you a copy of, and I never looked at it. I, I mean, I look at your list, and it's got names, I look at that, and, and we have to rely upon somebody that, that knows more about this than we do. So having said that, that, would you have a comment to, to that before we vote?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, on that, uh, and I carbon copied you on the emails that I sent to the group that you had mentioned on that, the list that you gave me. And I carbon copied you on the emails that I sent to Mr. Moon. Mr. Moon, I sent the emails twice, I have not received, and going to his website, it says the best way to contact him is by this email. I used his email address, and he has yet to respond to either of my two emails. So I've reached out twice, I don't have any other, I cannot find a phone number to contact him by, so I've only found the one means to contact him, and I made two efforts to do that, and have had no response from Mr. Moon.
So you haven't had any response from any other groups that had-
No, sir, I haven't.
Some concerns about, uh, the, the names?
No, sir.
Okay. Anybody else have any question? Comment?
I concur with District, uh, Two, that, and, and, and not going back into a great deal of history on Nash Farm, because, like I said, I wasn't here, that was under Chairman Harper, and that existing board, and what it is is what it is at the end of the day. But, uh, my, my only concern, I'm fully for the monument. I have no issues with the monument. I've just had the same conversations with Mr. Moon as several others have about the names on them, and, and I just want to be sure that, I just really want to be sure that the names are right. Now, you cleared up part of it for me when you stated that not all, see, at first, this was given to me that everybody died there. You've already cleared that part up, they didn't all die there. Uh, one of the names that I had read on a different piece of email that I'd received, that the person died in nineteen oh one or nineteen something, I don't remember the exact date, but it was, it was something to that effect. I, those, those are the only things I'm concerned with, is being accurate with what we're gonna put there. That's all, I mean.
Yeah, and Commissioners, I assure you that I'll be glad to provide documentation from a national source of every name that we intend to put on that monument. Uh, and most of the sources that we have came out of the National Archives from the United States Government, uh, is where the sources came from. And out of those sources on there, it gives specific information. Some of the information that we were able to get out of the archives was literally written the next day after the battle. So it's pretty, you know, you know, that's a pretty reliable resource on that, and we have a, we have documented resources which will be on file at Nash Farm for anybody to view, uh, about any of the names that are on the monument, and where our sources come from. Uh, and that's all, you know, if somebody has a difference of a name or a conflict on there, all I ask is show me their source of information so we can compare it with our source of information, so that we do get the best source of information that we have.
Yes, sir. Let, let me say this, should we approve this today, is there still time to make, to have someone look at the name?
Yes, sir.
I mean, that, we could, I could make, or some of us could maybe make a phone call and, and have that name, just, just, what I, what I'll do is, I'll find out which names we're talking about, if it's one, two, or three.
It may be one name.
Sir?
It may not be but one or two names, in question.
It may not be but one, but if there would be, if we could approve it today, and that way we move forward, but we hold off on the names and just, and, and we'll give it like fourteen days, okay? You know, or between now and the next meeting, which is approximately fourteen days.
Eighteen.
But we approve it, we get that done, we don't have to come back to that issue, but would you entertain us, uh, furnishing that name to you, and then you get back with, uh, District Two Commissioner would be the best one, because it's in his district? But would that be a minimum to you?
And I've, I've never had problems with Bill emailing, calling, I mean, he's, he's on it. I mean, I, I, I mean, he's, he's, so I think if the, the issue is, we, Bill, you're willing, we're gonna go ahead and pass the resol- or vote on the resolution, I don't know if it's gonna pass yet, but we're gonna vote on the resolution. Between now and the time the monument's built, you're willing to have a sit-down with whoever has concerns?
Oh, yes, and be most happy to, and, and kind of give you an idea, Commissioner, on this, is the piece of granite won't even be mined until June.
Let me suggest this, uh, right now, we got a motion, uh, on the floor to-
With a second.
-approve the resolution. Now, having said that, uh, would, would it be, I think it'd be very appropriate if we could get your group with a representation, and, uh, the other group, representation, and then, uh, Commissioner, uh, Preston, which is District Two, and, and sit down and, and kind of moderate, not, not having any expertise roll?
I'll be honest, I'm not an expert on Civil War history. I mean, so my moderation would be very limited. What I, what I suggest, because you even said it, Chairman, in the fact that you said that when y'all did the wall, you had to, to verify within twenty-four hours because they were moving forward. I think we have gone abundantly over even what you did on that wall-
On that with the two groups.
-by, by having a, a meeting, so we're just, we're chasing our tails a little bit. I think, I mean, Bill is, he's a historian of this stuff as much as Mr. Moon is, that it'd be nice just to let these gentlemen who have a passion for this talk about it, figure it out, but we're gonna go ahead and prove it so we can move forward and not chase our tails on it. Because that's what, I think, I think we're splitting hairs here to a degree.
Bill, I, I think if we approve it without anything else, since time is not of essence, I suggest that we table it to the meeting on the eighteenth.
Well, time is of the essence, like, you gotta put the order in, and not go work on it, but you need to have this approved.
I mean, the eighteenth of this month, that, would that be, is that what you was talking about?
We, we have a motion in a second, though. Already out on the, don't we have a motion in a second?
We, we have a discussion, and the, the motion is current.
There's a motion in a second.
Say again?
There's a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second, we, we, we're now discussing it, so unless somebody calls the question, we're gonna continue to-
I just want to clarify- I'm not trying to stop it, okay?
I understand, Commissioner.
All I just wanted is an opportunity to, to, just for the two parties, just to have a conversation. I'm ready to vote on it today. I'm ready to get it done, get it out of the way, but at the end, if, if, if I have your assurance that y'all will look at it, and I will make sure, I'll get a phone number from you, if you will make it, give it to the county clerk, and I'll make sure that, that you two talk one way or the other, and at the end of the day, we'll be fine. I just, I want to move forward, I don't want to have to do it, been, it's been going on for too long already. But I just, just for my own peace of mind, and, and, you know, that we got the right names on there, because I got one group telling me they do, and one group telling me they don't, and, and I trust both of you. So, I mean, so if that's okay, I mean, that's all that I have.
That sounds, that sounds good. My comment is, I would vote to table it to after these two people are met, because the deal is, I'm the one that's gonna have to deal with all the comments later, and I would like for it to be ended up like the, uh, Wall of Honor, to where when you put the names on, that, that particular controversial goes to sleep. So having said that, if, best on this, if, if you meet with them, and then, uh, it, it's already a done deal.
Well, I've extended two invitations, and he's yet to respond, so.
I will get those numbers for you. I'll get you a phone number.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, I, I can get it very easily. Uh, so it, it, I mean, I just want y'all to have a conversation.
And I'd be most happy to, you know, because like I say, in my email, I specifically, you know, invited him for us to sit down and compare his resources with our resources so that we know which is the best. Because that's all I'm gonna raise to the end.
Yes, sir. Let me ask you this, is there anybody here from the other group today? Okay, one through. Any further, we got a comment here?
Yeah, I've been out toured at, at Nash Farms, and, uh, it's really impressive, and we really appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any further?
I concur, Bill, I've been out there looking at the exhibits, and I think we got one of the, the nice exhibits out there that we could possibly have. Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I invite all the Commissioners to come out, and any of the county employees to come out and see what has been done to document the history of Henry County.
I don't think anybody up here in this group has any doubt about the hard work and, and the, the deal, but as far as being responsible, uh, it, it's just a, a loophole there that we, I think if we just take one more step, we could resolve. Now, at the end of the, the day, that the other group, you can't get together, and then obviously, you made a request, and we obviously have to honor your names, period.
Right.
But, but I, I'm just saying, it's, uh, your group has credibility, as you just stated. The other group, to some of us, has some credibility in some respect of it. And, and the unique thing is, the other group is ninety-nine percent behind Friends of the Family. So it, it, it's just this one percent that, that needs to come to some fair and equitable, uh, decision, and if you can't meet, if you get to an impasse, then obviously, we're not gonna intervene. We're not gonna be the one to say, put these names, take that name off. And I'm just trying to put us in a position to where since time is really not of essence, that we can, can, can get both groups that, uh, on, on the same train. So having said that, if no further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no. And I'm voting no for, for the reason I think that, uh-
Yes, sir, I understand there's no vote.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move down to the, uh, Public Safety. Resolution request approval to purchase replacement components, parts of existing exhaust filtration system. Mr. Bill Lacy.
Morning, Minister Chairman, Commissioners. The resolution that you see before you today authorized the purchase of replacement parts for our exhaust filtration systems in each one of our fire stations. Uh, this is, um, to Clean Air Concepts in the amount of thirty thousand one hundred and four dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Anybody have any questions to the chief? We have a resolution in the book, a resolution to the water commissioners to purchase of replacement parts for existing exhaust air filtration system. Does somebody move in that direction? Have a motion from District One?
Second.
Second from Two. Uh, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your, without further discussion.
Yes, sir. I just, I, I got a question, it's a sole source.
Yes, um, for purposes of, uh, warranty, um, the manufacturer says that we need to use those filters that were designed for the system.
I, I understand that fully, I did, I didn't see that in there, but I do understand that.
There is a letter.
Come for a motion, raise your right hand. We'll move.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Technology, resolution request approval of, of purchase storage capacity. Skip Floyd, the Director of IT.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, good morning Commissioners. Resolution you have before you is to purchase additional storage capacity for our IT infrastructure. The county had purchased the original infrastructure in two thousand and eleven, and since we have steadily increased the volume of data, we need to, and we are required to maintain the additional purchase of a hundred and eleven terabytes at a cost of forty-eight thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars.
Any further discussions? Not, does somebody move? We, uh, approve the resolution to approve the purchase of expansion of storage capacity for the three HP SAN storage devices. Have a motion District Five. Have a second for District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Some move. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have a resolution request approval of an agreement with the Eagles Landing Property Owners Association for Landscape, Terry McMichels.
Morning, Chairman, Board Members. As a result of our construction of Eagles Landing Parkway and related construction on, uh, Country Club, some landscaping and hardscaping features were removed. Subsequently, the Eagles Landing Community Association desires to make certain hardscape and landscape improvements to the area within the county's right-of-way in order to beautify and enhance the aesthetic appearance of the area of Eagles Landing Parkway and Country Club post-roadway construction. As part of this, a request, we're requesting an agreement between the Eagles Landing Community Association in Henry County as needed concerning placement, maintenance, and irrigation of the proposed improvements. Plans for the proposed placement of landscaping and hardscape components have been reviewed and are approved with notes upon execution of the agreement by both parties. Our department is recommending approval of this agreement.
Anybody have any questions?
I have some comments, Mr. Chief.
Yes, sir.
Uh, at the very beginning of Eagles Landing Parkway, there were several signs, a number of fences, and other landscape improvements that were done. Uh, this was prior to, uh, four-lane in Eagles Landing. And what happened at the end of the day is, is that we were gonna have to take a lot of that out, tear a lot of the, all the walls, the fences, and other things down. We entered into an agreement with Eagles Landing Property Owners Association, whom I don't know if that's a legal name, and I think we'll talk about that in a second. But we entered into a, uh, a, uh, an agreement whereby that the county would, would pay them a certain amount of money to put it back, instead of the county putting it back at a later date. That way we were, cost to cure is the terminology for that. But, uh, at the end of the day, I, I just want to make this comment, Eagles Landing Parkway, anybody that's traveled it since we forelanded it, it's awesome. I mean, it's an east-west connector, it works very well, it, it takes a lot of traffic off of some of the other roads, and it works great. Uh, Eagles Landing Parkway, the, the- Uh, Eagles Landing Parkway, the, the homeowners associations in Eagles Landing and other areas around that are involved with Eagles Landing take care of maintenance, uh, grass cutting, trash, it's probably the prettiest parkway in the entire county, and, uh, I've been on just about all of them. So, having said that, I mean, whatever we do to, to help that situation, I'm fully on board with this, uh, with this, you know, this agreement, basically, is putting it in place, uh, but that, anybody that's traveled it knows that it's, it's a huge plus, uh, for Henry County and for the area, and act, for all of the county, because you can do east-west connector there and, and get a, you know, get away from the traffic, don't have to go all the way down to Jonesboro Road and some of the others. Jonesboro Road's nice, it's just not as nice as Eagles Landing. Uh, but listen, I appreciate it, and that's, that's all the comment I have.
Chairman, I need to make a correction also. We determined this morning, I think, uh, the name of the entity needs to be changed to Eagles Land, Eagles Landing Community Association. We just found out this morning that, I think, make sure we got the right name in the agreement. So, we, we need to make that change to that agreement, if we could do that. If we could make that a part of it.
Anybody else have any questions? Uh, I, I know this, uh, includes a significant, uh, license agreement. Has counsel reviewed this? I know you signed off on the, the back sheet, got you. So, if somebody would move in that direction?
I, I move that we, uh, a motion to, or I recommend that we approve with, uh, the changes that, uh, Terry had stated in the ownership.
Have a motion District Four.
Second.
We have a second from District, uh, One. I caught that one on a peripheral vision before somebody mentioned something over here. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Next, we have a resolution request approval of speed humps in the King Crossing subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, the required number of residents of King Crossing subdivision signed a petition in accordance with the Henry County Speed Hump Ordinance. Staff of Henry County DOT verified that the requirements of the ordinance were met. Um, we have located where we propose all the speed humps to be on a drawing, which is included in your request. So, we would ask that, um, the board approve this speed hump request.
We're talking through the whole, based on area of view, we're talking about 17 speed humps.
I think there's 17.
17. We have a resolution, uh, in the book to recommend approval of the full board of commissioners, the resolution to add speed humps in King Crossing subdivision. And if you'll notice the display, uh, just, just, could you put this over, you got one, the area of focus? Could you show that?
Can.
Please.
I'm gonna note, this is Airview Road here, so the subdivision comes off Airview Road, and these yellow, um, kinda a little hard to see here, but they represent the speed humps. So, this is quite a large subdivision, as you can tell.
And they pay for all this? Who, who, who pays for all this construction?
The ordinance, I think the ordinance requires that, uh, the cost of this, I'd have to go back and make sure that I'm correct on that. I know we put them in, um, it's been a while since I read that, Chairman, I'll have to go back and look and see if it...
I just thought I'd ask that.
At one time, I don't know if it's still in there, at one time or not, it was assessed on their property tax, but I'm not sure that's, we revised it one time and reduced the number, and we may have changed that cost requirement. This, it may be now that the cost, I think, are just on the county to do.
How much does it cost to put in one, roughly?
Um, I think the total for all of these is around $12,000 to $15,000, I think.
Okay.
That may be less.
We have a question from, uh, District One.
Hey Terry, are they gonna be the, the little round ones, are they gonna be the long, flat ones?
No, these are actually the speed tables where you come up four inches, and then you flatten out for a short distance, and then go back down. Um, these speed tables, really, they're, they're more tables than humps. They are made so that a vehicle can go over them at 25 miles an hour or less, you know, tries to, but, uh, without messing up the suspension and emergency vehicles and things like that. The intent's not to make them stop, but slow down, and yet the emergency vehicles can go over them and still respond.
Is this in District Five?
It is in District Five.
It is? Is District Five, when it takes a motion to approve the resolution, so move. Have a motion?
Second.
Second from District, uh, Two. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Thank you. Purchasing, we have a, uh, resolution request award of a bid for wide area network services. Mr. Rod Gray.
I'm gonna get to the chair, I'm running out of room. Thankfully recuse myself from this.
We have a gentleman here that makes his living on fiber optic cables via AT and, AT&amp;T.
I'm, I'm in the communications business. And then that's, and that is a part of it, but that's...
That's what I thought.
Very small part of it, but the problem is, is that I'm gonna recuse myself simply because the companies that I work for could end up doing the project.
Okay. Okay. Bruce, you, you recusing yourself, too?
No, I'm gonna get off.
Okay.
All right, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The item I present to you this morning is an award for RFP 1404, which is wide area network services. The, um, this proposed contract will provide data connectivity services for the listed 39 Henry County facilities, and will lock in pricing for future service level and expansion requests from the issuance of a notice to proceed. The recommendation is to award a contract to Conterra Ultra Broadband of Charlotte, North Carolina, with the highest overall score of 424.35 and a monthly cost of $1,698 per facility for an initial list of 39 facilities.
Uh, I'm gonna, go ahead.
I just wanted to, I kinda wanted to bring the public up to speed, is that one of the reasons we asked for this is because we were concerned about the infrastructure of businesses and getting fiber in here. And I, and I was on the thought that if we put a carrot out there and put a, you know, longer-term contract than the one years we normally do, we could entice additional investments. I'm a little disappointed that, you know, that it looks like budgetarily-wise, this is not a great decision for, for the citizens of Henry County, because it's, it's looking for us to pay extra for something that we're in a market where prices are, historically have been going down. You know, I even, my business here in, in Henry County just got a notice from Charter that they were doubling my bandwidth for the same price. I mean, that's just the nature of the beast with the way technology goes, is you usually get more for less. So, I'm, I'm planning on, I wanna give you a chance to, to make your comments, Chairman, but I plan on making a motion to, to reject all the RFPs based upon budgetary concerns.
Uh, with respect to the, uh, the RFP and the committee that evaluated this, uh, they did a good job. Uh, the end results, when we, when I was dissecting this and going over it, the first thing that popped in my head was, it's gonna require another $421,000 a year. And the Finance Director had indicated that, uh, that would, uh, have to come out of general funding. So, we, we know the budget was last year and what the budget is coming in, so, uh, just like the sharks on TV, for that reason, I'm out.
Was that the lowest bid?
No, it wasn't the lowest cost proposed.
It might've been the highest bid.
It was not the highest, it was the highest of the shortlisted firms, but it was not the lowest.
I'll make a motion to...
Reject all the RFP offers based upon budgetary concerns.
Second. You make the motion?
Yeah.
Have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move, thank you so much.
Right, as we move on.
I know, I wanna kind of mirror what the Chairman said. I appreciate the, the committee doing their work on this. I think at the time, though, we just need to close out that look. And I, I wanna give an update to the citizens. When I'm, when we first started talking about this, and, I mean, I think it was July, August of last year.
Yes, sir.
I, I got up in front of everybody and showed them my, my, my cellphone service. If I did a speed trek, we were, we were horrible down here. We, we were not even barely 4G with one or two bars. Now, we're LTE throughout the entire county, so there are things going on, it seems like, behind the scenes, just naturally.
Yes, sir, I agree.
So, thank you for y'all's hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, I have a resolution request, uh, an agreement with McIntosh Community Services Board for Office Space, Michael Harris.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Back in December, December 3rd of 2013, uh, staff came before the commission to give information based on a request we received from McIntosh Trail to utilize one of our existing buildings. It's the old transit building, um, building was, uh, has been, has, has, has been vacant since we built the new transit building over off of, um, Industrial Boulevard. And they are currently utilizing space, McIntosh Trail, um, program is currently utilizing space within our Health Department, and they've asked for, um, opportunity to make, they made the request to see if they could, um, if the board would be amenable to allowing them to utilize the old transit building for one of their new peer, uh, programs called the peer program. Um, at that time, board directed staff to go ahead and proceed with crafting a lease agreement, um, and working in conjunction with the Legal Department, we've done that. Um, we've, we've gone through, the lease agreement has been drafted. However, after speaking with Ms. McCollum, and she's here, she can address any specific questions you may have. She did ask, um, for, uh, just a couple of minor amendments to that agreement, and I wanted to review those with your, with the board today. I'm fine with it, but I wanted to bring it to the board with their attention. It's under, and I'll put it up here for, for you to see. And I've tried to highlight those areas, um, in question, under Section Three, Consideration, Item Number B. She's asked for the exclusion of, in essence, it reads McIntosh Trail at its expense shall maintain, keep, and repair the following roofs, exterior walls, canopies, gutters, downspouts of the exterior, um, portions of the building located on the premises. You know, typically, in all of our lease agreements, that's something that we handle ourselves, and that's not the responsibility of the tenant, so, um, had no problem with the, the request for removal of that. Okay with the, all the interior portions of the building being, um, maintained by McIntosh Trail, but also the section that reads, um, all electrical, plumbing, heating, air conditioning, and gas facilities. Again, typically, our facilities maintenance department handles those, those duties, um, along with parking lots, driveways, and landscaping located on the premises. And that's, you know, as a matter of consistency, that's not, you know, those other organizations that serve as tenants for some of our spaces, those are responsibilities that the county has typically, um, handled ourselves. So, she is asking that those items be deleted from the lease agreement, and they be responsible. In this case, they be responsible for paying all utilities of, of, of the, um, all, all utilities associated with the building, as well as maintaining the interior of the building as well.
Anybody have any questions? Uh, I know that once we execute this agreement, that would be the commencement date, but what is, when, when do they anticipate taking?
Moving in.
Yes, sir.
Um, and then Pam, you wanna come up and address? You know, I would think, there's, in the first ice storm we had, we did sustain some damages, we had some busted pipes, and our facilities maintenance department has worked through, kind of, they had to pull some, some of the carpeting out and replace some walls, so they've done a lot of that work already. So, there's, maybe a little more interior work may need to have, just to get, get things up and, um, suitable for, for occupation, but I would think within the next 30 to 60 days, certainly.
Certainly. Uh, Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity, um, to be able to utilize this building to expand our peer program that serves individuals with mental illness and addictions. Uh, we would work with, uh, County Manager on identifying an appropriate timeframe to move in once the repairs are made, and then, uh, that we can arrange for movers to, to move some of our equipment and, uh, technology, phones, and those sorts of things, so that we can be operational in that facility.
Thank you so much. Are, are you saying we're already renovating this for, for this purpose? Is that what you said?
No, we were just, the renovations we did, more so the repairs. We had some flood work, some flooding that, that occurs, we had to go in there and rip out some of the carpet that was damaged, some of the walls, replace the walls and ceiling work that, that was damaged, so, so we just did some maintenance and repair work after the flooding.
Thank you. Does anybody have a, any more comments or discussion, or we have a resolution? A resolution to enter into a memorandum of understanding, and I understand, this will be, won't be a, uh, understanding, it would be a intergovernmental agreement, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, for, for record, I think we need to change the resolution, instead of, uh, an MOA, is change that to a, uh, intergovernmental agreement, an IGA. Would that be appropriate?
Intergovernmental lease agreement.
Ma'am?
It is an intergovernmental lease agreement, yes, sir.
Okay, got you. Okay, if you make the amendments in the, the resolution and, and change it from a memorandum of agreement to an IGA, if somebody would move in that direction to consider?
And, Chairman, that would be with the noted changes as well?
Okay. We have, we have a motion from District Four. Have a second from District One. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. So move, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a board appointment to the Henry County Board of Family and Children's Services. And it's a resolution, and I'm gonna read parts of it because it's significant. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners for an appointment to the Henry County Board of Family and Children's Services, whereas Joyce Rogers, a Henry County resident, has served on the Board of Family and Children's Services since 2004, Ms. Rogers has resigned, and the law requires the County Commission to appoint a successor. Uh, whereas the person appointed will serve the remainder of Ms. Rogers' term until June the 30th of this year, and a new term begins July the 1st of 2014 and ending June the 30th, 2019. Whereas the Board received a request from the Director of Henry County Department of Family and Children's Services to consider appointing Catherine Rutledge. And therefore, be it resolved, the Henry County Board of Commissioners appoint Catherine Rutledge to the Henry County Board of Family and Children's Services for the remainder of Ms. Rogers, ending June the 30th, and also, uh, the new term beginning July the 1st. If somebody moved, we, uh, approve this resolution.
Move to approve.
We have a motion from District Three.
Second.
Second from District Two. Any further discussion, raise your right hand. So move. Uh, what I'd like to ask the Board, if they would consider, uh, amending the agenda to add an item, uh, that requests approve, approval of the use of the seized fund and asset forfeiture accounts to pay for information related to the investigation of the hit and run and consequence of the death of Officer, uh, Elgin Daniel. So, if somebody would consider, uh, amending the, have a motion from District Five.
Second.
Have a second from District Two. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
He had his hand up before we voted.
I'm sorry, I, I, when you, when I saw your hand, I thought it was a vote.
And I, I have a question, would you, okay, come to the, uh...
I give her a green signal.
Officer Daniel, now, what, he was hit while trying to help a person put fuel in a car on...
North Henry Boulevard.
North Henry Boulevard.
Yes, sir, November the 12th, 2012.
The guy that hit him was driving a pickup truck, and the mirror hit the guy.
That's correct.
What are, what's the hit and run? Because we caught the guy.
Oh, absolutely. The purpose of this was to request the use of seized funds for the reward.
For all due respect, we, we have a motion to add this to the agenda only.
Oh, I apologize.
This would be very appropriate at the right time, so, if somebody would call the questions, uh, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
Okay.
Now, we've added this to the agenda, so I was gonna ask him to present the case, so if...
I apologize, Mr. Chair, I, I got ahead of myself, I do that occasionally, it's the gray eye.
That's why, I thought when you raised your hand, you was voting for the issue.
I'm gonna say hello and good morning again, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, I appreciate y'all agreeing to see me in reference to this. On November the 12th, as y'all recall, 2012, Elgin Daniel was struck and hit by a hit-and-run driver on North Henry Boulevard in Stockbridge, Georgia. Uh, during the investigation, the Henry County Police Department offered a $1,000 reward for any information that led to the arrest and conviction of, uh, the suspected person. Um, we ended up receiving information from a gentleman in Calhoun, Georgia, in reference to a replacement to the mirror, um, that the Commissioner was referring to, that, uh, we were able to track that information back to the House. His information directly led to the arrest and conviction. The conviction just occurred about two weeks ago, and so we're coming for, to, uh, request the use of narcotic seized funds to pay the $1,000 reward. And I also wanted to advise the Board that we made contact with the Justice Department and ensured that that is a proper use of narcotic seized funds, and it's appropriate and under the seized gun... and under the seized funds guidelines.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you. I mean, I was reading at the same time we were doing it, and I knew all about the case, but it seems like, I mean, it's, well, as my daddy used to say, when you in a hole, quit digging. But at the end of the day, I just wanted to be sure, because I knew this person had already been apprehended, and I don't, I don't know if he's came to trial yet or not.
Yes, sir. It's completely convicted.
Right. So I, so it's taken us a long time for this $1,000.
Absolutely.
And.
And that's the reason why I wanted to try to come before you today, to try to expedite getting the funds to him. He's well deserved. The information led directly to the conviction.
Is this normally how we do a reward for information leading to the arrest and conviction?
A lot of times, we have civilian parties that'll put forward rewards, sometimes through what's called like tipsters and cops and things up in Atlanta. The Fraternal Order of Police has also agreed to supplement this reward in their own way, but this is only the part that's due by the Henry County Police Department.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I apologize for jumping ahead.
No, sir. And I apologize if I jumped.
And I probably wouldn't have jumped ahead if it hadn't have been put on my desk about thirty seconds ago. I'd have had an opportunity to read it and understand what we're doing, and this happens to us a lot of times. No offense, no meant, but at the end of the day, I wish that we could get these things ahead of those times. While we can't, I have absolutely no idea. Thank you, sir.
This is my fault. I accept full responsibility on you getting it when you did.
Well, no, I'm just making the comment. The reason that I got ahead of myself, I didn't have a chance to look at it.
I know, I know, I know. Well, you, you got somebody you can put the focus on. Is anybody here from FOP?
No, sir. They weren't invited today. This was just for the request of seized funds. Once we get approval.
The reason I brought that up, I was, had a conversation with FOP along this issue, and this is when it came about. And it kind of come about real quickly in its own, but I apologize, it should have been on the agenda, and I failed to, I failed to have it, to check it, to make sure it was on there. And thankful for the clerk, she brought it to my attention that it was not put on there. But anyway, I understand that based on information from FOP, they're going, they've set aside $5,000 to do that, so.
That's my understanding as well, sir. And we would communicate with them to be able to do something when we go to meet with the individual person for the rewards.
Having said that, we have a resolution that was handed out to you, and you notice I didn't say it was in your book, it was handed out to you in an untimely manner, authorizing expenditure over $1,000 for the Henry County Police Department seized funds and asset forth to account for information leading to the arrest and conviction of a hit-and-run driver. Have a motion from District One. Second from, correction, we have a motion from District Five, who's sitting in the number one seat, in just order, and I have a second from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairman.
Public comments, in order that was given to me, I'd like to recognize Mr. Steve Cash, and you will have five minutes. And if you would, give your name and address for the record, please, and Mr. Cash is going to speak on SPOLOST issues. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like, at this time, if it's appropriate, I have a tag team on, and he's listed on your public comments, Mr. Clay Wall. Can I bring him up here as part of the tag team?
As part of your tag team and part of your five minutes?
As part of my five minutes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to introduce to y'all Mr. Clay Wall, who is the Chairman of the Henry Council for Quality Growth, for a presentation.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Clay Wall, current Chair of the Henry County Quality Growth Board of Directors, business owner here in McDonough Double Eagle Land Development, located at 1365 McDonough Parkway. Last week at our monthly meeting, the Board of Directors came up with a resolution in support of securing funds for SPOLOST four projects, and they've directed me to read this resolution into, to you today. Steve has just given you a copy. My apologies in advance to Commissioners Moss and Barham. They've already had to sit through this at our meeting before, but maybe I'm getting a little better at it. Whereas Henry County SPOLOST four resolution passed by margin large enough to win the November 13th election, and whereas Henry County voters by majority did see the needed projects described in the resolution, which included economic development, transportation, education, and quality of life enrichments needed to be constructed in a reasonable timeframe, and whereas a reasonable timeframe to make available in the near future funding necessary to initiate the interchange study required prior to construction of a critically needed interchange south of Georgia Highway 155 at I-75, where the complex daily traffic snags ward off new economic development, and whereas a reasonable timeframe to make available funding necessary to assist in building Phase Two of the Southern Crescent Technical College. At this time, Henry County college students drive out beyond county borders to further their education, and whereas a reasonable timeframe to make available funding necessary to design and build the many needed intersection, road, bridge, and other transportation improvements to adequately move Henry County vehicle or traffic safely through our community, and whereas a reasonable timeframe to make available funding to build fire stations for police precinct, purchase police vehicles and fire vehicles, needed 911 radio replacement, build a senior citizen center, and more to help improve upon the quality of life in Henry County, and whereas not to make available funding in reasonable timeframe will see land price increases for the purchase of projects to use for use and right of ways, the cost of materials needed to construct projects will increase. The county will continue to lose economic development opportunities due to entangle traffic snags. Insurance premiums will continue to rise along with the possibility of fire damage due to limited fire protection in certain areas of the county, and be resolved that the Board of Directors of the Henry Council for Quality Growth encourages and supports the Henry County Board of Commissioners to actively seek ways to secure bonding avenues immediately in order to activate funding to assure economic development, transportation, education, and quality of life needs are met in reasonable timeframe and may possibly by use of said timely bonds. Henry Council for Quality Growth Board of Directors, Clay Wall, Chairman, three, four, fourteen. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You got anybody else in your group that wants to use the remaining 1 minute and 32 seconds, sir? Okay. Next, we'll recognize Elaine Layden, wants to speak on lighting issues Fairmont Station subdivision. If you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Elaine Layden. I own two subdivi, I mean, two duplexes in this subdivision, 75 and 77 Wabash, and 105 and 115 Chesapeake Drive. I'd just like to, I normally have five minutes, but I'd like to just give a brief overview for the Commissioners that are not aware of the problem that we had there on Friday. Security lighting in the Fairview Station subdivision was disconnected on Monday, February 24th, by Snapping Shows EMC. This affected over 500 Henry County residents. Per conversations with Sherri Matthews of Henry County and Shay Matthews, Snapping Shows said it was because no one had been paying for the lighting. The developer failed to process necessary paperwork to Henry County supposedly back in 2005. Snapping Shows has not been billing anyone. Snapping Shows did notify Henry County of their intent to turn off service, and was told by Ms. Matthews, they asked Snapping Shows to wait until they could notify homeowners. That did not happen. I was on the phone with Snapping Shows in Henry County for over seven hours on Friday, working to get service back on for these residents. There are still approximately 25 duplexes in this subdivision without lights. This presents a security and health problem for the folks in that community, and we're talking about approximately 60 duplexes with probably four people in each side. We have single-family households that are headed by moms. The two duplexes that I own, the average medium age of the folks in there is 62. So what I'm looking for here today is a solution or any kind of assistance I can get from the county. I'm aware of the process needed to get a permanent fix for this situation. Now, Ms. Matthews said that she was going to have someone here today to give me some information. She said she was having her secretary print up some stuff to give me today. Okay, but let's not let this go against my time. Let me finish, please.
We have a question. And once, the rule is, once we have a Commissioner that has a question.
You stop the clock?
I take the clock off. The clock's not an issue now.
Okay, thank you.
You're fine. We're going to let you finish. But I was working with Mike on Friday to try to come up with a temporary solution for the situation. Mike, can you give us, give me an update? Because it was my understanding that they were turning the lights on, and we were requesting to have those lights on until we're able to rectify the situation with Snapping Shows.
That's correct. Speaking with officials from Snapping Shows, they did agree to turn the lights on. They did turn them on over the weekend, and they have committed to continue to work with Henry County while this process is going on. They haven't given us a set timeframe. You know, we're hopeful that the issue can be resolved within the next few weeks to a month. You know, obviously, there's some issues as relates to our process that would involve the residents, the property owners, getting petitions and bringing those petitions back to the county. We've worked with Snapping Shows representatives to get an idea of, they've gone out and done an assessment of the, of the subdivision, both subdivisions, and they've given us an estimated cost, so we can incorporate that into the letters that go out to the property owners. To Ms. Layden's comment regarding the property owners, Sherri Matthews has compiled a list of all the property owners working with our tax assessments department, and she has that available for Ms. Layden before she leaves out here today. So she can provide her with all those addresses. We forwarded the process, the application for streetlight petition, which is a pretty common process actually, and included in today's consent agenda was that very same process that took place earlier, to be that same type of process. Again, this is a case where it should have been done years back. The developer did not take the steps forward to move forward with a streetlight petition, which would have taken it out of the developer's name and into the property owner's name. That's the normal process. So, you know, while we're late in doing that, you know, that's fine, we can still handle the exact same way, the exact same process. So we forwarded the information that the residents need to take, that the property owners need to take, in order to start the process. And again, we have spoken directly with Snapping Shows representatives, and we have, they have committed to continue to work with the county to keep the lights on until the issue can be resolved.
What about the 60 residents who went without lighting this past weekend? Is there any way we can move forward with getting Snapping Shows to get those lights on until we're able to, you know, put a resolution in place?
Yeah, it was my understanding that the lights were on this weekend.
Not in all of it. It's one subdivision, but it's separated by streets. So what they did, and what Snapping Shows even adds to me, did I just want them to turn on the lights on the street where I have property? But they did turn it on in what I'm assuming was Phase One of the building of the subdivision, but there's another phase, which was Phase Two, that came along later on, that is actually separated by buildings in between, like commercial buildings. So I found out, and I didn't find this out until over the weekend, that those 25 duplexes have not had lights for months, but nobody told me. So, you know, we've got another 50, you know, houses over there without any streetlights.
Yeah, it was not familiar, and it's my understanding that all the lights were turned on to the subdivision. It may have just been the Fairview Station.
Well, it is, that is still Fairview Station subdivision.
Right. I think one is considered Fairview Station, and one's considered East.
Well, on, on all of my paperwork, because I have duplexes in each phase, and all my paperwork says Fairview Station.
Again.
But I can give you the address, you know, and hopefully, we can get those folks.
Myself, Sherri, and the county clerk has also spoken with Ms. Layden. We continue to kind of work in conjunction with her and with Snapping Shows. I wasn't aware that part of them, only part of them got turned on.
Yeah, and I wasn't, when I was talking with Ms. Matthews or Snapping Shows, that that area hadn't had lighting for months.
Right. Now, what do we need to do to ensure that we get her on the agenda for the next meeting, so we can get the situation final?
Well, the challenge, you know, part of it is, it'll go back to the property owners. The way our process is stated, they have to provide, 51% of the property owners have to provide us with a petition indicating that they want to, that they're willing to, they want the lights, and they want to pay for the lights, the assessments that's associated with them. So right now, that paperwork has been forwarded to, I'm not sure if you've received it or not, Ms. Layden. We should get it today. I know Ms. Turner from the subdivision has received that information. We can make sure we get you a copy of the application as well, walk you through the process. So as soon as we get that information back from the property owners and the representatives, Ms. Layden's taking that, taking that charge, then we can get that item scheduled.
Also, do we need paperwork back in order to get it on the next agenda? And we still, you're going to be able to finish?
Realistically, the deadline for the next meeting is due today, so it certainly won't happen on the next meeting. It'll probably be the following meeting, but I have to give everything to the clerk.
Correct. It can happen on the next meeting, correct? There's a possibility.
If I have the petitions back, but I'll have to include that as part of my package.
All right.
Okay, sir, unfortunately, that's not going to happen, because 90% of the people that live there now are renters. And I do understand that you all are going to give me the homeowners' addresses and stuff, but I believe that what I'm going to run into is not getting any responses, and probably I'll have to start knocking on doors and asking the renters, explaining the situation to them, that they're not going to have any lights unless their landlord agrees to pay for lighting. So, you know, I appreciate you trying to help us get on the agenda for the next meeting, but I don't, I know I'm not going to have 50% of those signatures by the next meeting.
Let me make some comments. Number one, how long has Snapping Shows not been paid?
Five years, at least five.
Okay. Now, in the event that all this takes place, they get 51% of the owners, not the renters, but the owners, and they present the appropriate petition, now, is Snapping Shows, are they going to forgive all that when the time we sign up, or when, if and when this happens, the board approves it, then that begins the cycle?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, did you not mention that one of the lights that was out was a significant intersection? Was that mentioned?
No, sir.
Okay. I thought now, it might have been a possibility if it was a significant intersection, like on a county road, or going into subdivision, the county has in the past set precedent that because of safety issues, they would install and pay for lighting, and once it met that criteria, for a safety feature. But we talking about just a normal, we just approved two of them at this meeting, so that's what we talking about.
Right. These would be, the two that were approved previously were non-revenue, you know, revenue generating, which means county pays the upfront cost, and the assessment, is it, the cost assessed to those property owners, and they pay it back to the county.
Okay. We know how many property owners, it may not be 62 property owners.
Well, it's, well, yes, yeah.
So you own two.
This subdivision was built in 1985, and it's changed a lot. 1985 probably had a lot of the property owners, but I know, because I have two duplexes over there, that it's probably about 90% renters now.
Okay. So what, I think the only thing we can do is, without putting it on there, is leave that slot open, and when you get ready to publish the agenda, if you've got 51%, then we'll proceed. Other than that, we'll just be ready to hear it when y'all get ready. How about that? So if EMC is going to do something in the interim, that's between EMC and somebody out there, it won't be, Henry County won't be guaranteeing payment if they go back and cut the lights on. Is that what we saying?
No. I don't, I don't think we're saying that.
What are we saying?
I'm sorry, you said, would we be guaranteeing payment?
No, I'm saying, if they go back and cut the lights on.
Right now.
Henry County won't be in the loop and have to pay for that.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
In our country with Snappy Shows, you know, they're trying to work with the community. They understand, obviously, it's a safety issue, but they're not charging us at this point. But, but they certainly made the point that, you know, they need, this issue needs to get resolved from their standpoint, for obvious reasons.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, yeah. And basically, well, you went over some of the things that I needed, but what I need at this point, if I could get one point of contact with Henry County, just in case Snappy Shows thinks that we're dragging our feet, and they cut the lights off again, and I'm going to need some assistance in getting the other 25 units' lights on. So, pardon me?
You're talking about Henry County being obligated. You're talking about Henry County being obligated for the payment?
No, no, I'm not talking about, I'm just talking about Henry County using whatever influence they used on Friday to get Snapping Shows to turn the power back on. I was on the phone for seven hours, and I'd rather not go through everybody in Henry County and everybody in Snapping Shows. So what I would like to have is possibly one point of contact within the county that I can go to in case Henry County cuts the lights off again.
Chairman, that would be, you know, Ms. Matthews and our planning zoning department. That process typically works through the planning zoning department. She's already been working with Ms. Layden. They're providing her with the, with the information on the addresses. And I'll commit to reaching back out to Snapping Shows concerning the other twenty-five lights. But as far as one source point of contact, it would be Ms. Matthews.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, that concludes all the people I have that wish to speak. Do we have any commissioners that like to make a comment this time, if any reason? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, recently, there was an article in The Times that talked about several issues. And toward the end of the article, there was a comment made about Henry County being in debt for seventy-seven million dollars, which prompted a number of, of calls to me, asking what the seventy-seven million dollars included. I did talk with the county manager. I'm, I'm really not going to quote any figures. I don't have them in front of me. But I, I talked to Mr. Preston, Commissioner Preston, and asked him if he would sense how that's his, that's in more his line of work, that he would have some comment.
That's what you're trying to be polite and say.
Sir?
I'm a numbers nerd.
So, yes, sir, at this time, I yield the floor to...
Yes, sir.
We've had discussions on this, because I, I know on the face of it, seventy-seven million dollars is an alarming number. But if you break it down and actually look at the numbers, I want to kind of give the public a little background. Eight million of the seventy-seven million is actually the cities. You know, we helped the cities out on facilitating their bonding in the past. We, we helped that with being the reserves for them on kind of bringing all the money together. So you have to take out that eight million dollars, and there's twenty-nine million. And just so y'all know, behind the scenes, we, we've tried to figure out how we could prepay twenty-nine million dollars back on the, on the bond, because we've, the money's in the account, ready to pay these sploßed three bonds back. But we're not allowed to prepay them, unfortunately. I mean, and that's some of the things we're trying to correct with the way we're doing the projects in sploß four, so we don't run into a situation where we're sitting on cash while still paying interest on some bonds. So that's twenty-nine million. So if you take out the eight, the twenty-nine, it brings us down to forty million dollars of non-splopped debt. Fourteen million, that's gonna be paid down by June thirtieth of 2016. I mean, if you think about that, it's only two years and three months. We're gonna have that down, another fourteen million dollars. So we will have, if you close out June thirtieth of 2016, we'll go have twenty-six million dollars of debt. And we're not gonna be adding any additional sploß long-term debt by that date either, based upon the way we did the financing at the last. And, and I was excited. I even had a chance to talk to Commissioner Holmes over the weekend, I think it was Friday, actually. Where we were talking about that I don't even think we're gonna have to use as much of the line of credits as we discussed, based upon the work that the finance director has done, that it, it's gonna be a really good deal, I think, on the way we're gonna be able to get the projects facilitated, as we had the council for quality growth and expressing their concerns. We're gonna be able to maximize what we can do for the citizens without sending tons of money up for interest, because we're gonna use that debt as efficiently as possible.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Included in that, the bottom line and the information that, and I made that statement, the seventy-seven million was shown as a balance due or payable on June the thirtieth of 2013 at the end of the audit. Okay, we, we've all seen that sheet that had seventy-seven million at the bottom. Now, you, you indicated that some of it will be paid off, or maybe the buck of it, by twenty sixteen, and then it will reduce that forty million down to twenty-six million. Could you, for the benefit of our audience, could you tell them when the twelve-point-two obligation we have to the golf course, when will, when will it be paid off by the, that same chart?
Well, and, and that is a good point. Of the forty million dollars, twelve of that is the Cottonfields Golf Course. And that does extend out on a longer amortization table. I mean, our finance director can probably tell us a little bit more detail on how that amortization schedule's set up on our payment schedule.
Cottonfields is made up of two notes. One of them was larger in the beginning, back in oh-seven. It's, it was reduced through a prior principal payment on it. But one note's for two million, one-eighty-six, and again, this is just Cottonfields, and the other one's ten million. The way that note was structured was interest only, and the first principal payment will be made during the fiscal year sixteen on each of those notes. But in this fiscal year and next fiscal year, there is no principal payment, so the principal will remain at the twelve million, one-eighty-six.
And it wasn't, I don't mean to interrupt, Fred, but there was also discussion that, because we're already doing some discussion with some of the banks about these lines of credits, and there's a potential to, to refinance that to much favorable, better interest rates also?
Bank of America has the note. I spoke with them. They came over to the office yet last week. I spoke with them about these two specific notes and the amounts and the interest rate. Interestingly, the note that is down to two million, that was reduced to two million with the principal payment years ago, has a, a, well, it's, LIBOR had sixty-five percent plus ninety-four basis points. So that one, which is the two million, is, has a very favorable rate, if you would, on the two million. It's the one, as I said, that was paid down to that figure. But the ten million does have a fixed four-point-four, as I explained to them, in this market, that's awful high. They said they would go back, sharpen their pencil, and get back with us. And there are other banks that obviously I can speak with if they wanted to consolidate some of the debt. Some of the debt that we have that makes up that forty million, as a matter of fact, of the forty million, thirty-three of it is in four notes. One is the jail for eleven, these are balances as of June thirtieth thirteen. Eleven-point-three is the jail, that note went into effect in two thousand and six. Cottonfields already mentioned, the remaining twelve-point-two. Nash Farms brought up earlier is five-point-three, and then a four-point-three equipment note that was done in two thousand and eleven. And that note doesn't get paid off until twenty-twenty. So basically, looking at the interest rates on all of it, but that's thirty-three of the forty million right there in those four notes. So some notes will be paid off this year and next year. They're small amounts, and the bigger ones I just mentioned. So, but as far as the Cottonfields and the rate on the ten million, as I said, they, they're going back last week to sharpen their pencils and come back with something much better than four-point-four percent, hopefully.
So, and the biggest compliment is there's a plan. There's a plan of action to try to, to make sure we're maximizing to save as much money as possible for the citizens, and that's, that's the key part. Nobody likes debt. I think we all learned our lessons after the financial collapse of two thousand and seven and eight, that leverage, you do have to be careful with it. You can use it as a very effective tool, but don't get crazy with it. And I'm, I'm just fortunate that we have staff that, that kind of really helps knock this thing down, so we have a firm grasp of it. So that, that, it's not seventy-seven million. It's a much more digestible number, a smaller number than that.
Now, having said that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna comment on that. Without more, I believe it's, whatever you say, it's forty million, okay? But the finance department, when I asked them to give me a sheet that showed the balance owed, which the only thing they could do was June the thirtieth, twenty thirteen, that bottom line was seventy-seven million and some odd change. Now, the golf course with, with no more, even though ten millions on a fixed rate, it would be amortized until twenty thirty-two. So just, just for record, for, starting in twenty-ten, this board is paying four-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars, and that's the, the two-point-two million. And then you add the, the, the interest only for the ten million, and that comes up to four-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand. So we will pay that in ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Now, as just alluded to in twenty-seventeen, will be the first year we pay principal and, principal and interest. But I, I, just for the seven million, the seven million come off of our sheet that I didn't generate, and it came from, and it was no explanation on there. But having said that, anybody else have a comment?
I'm still...
Yes, sir.
Make a few more comments on it. One is, and I'm gonna do a little history lesson. We did one on Nash Farms, so I'm gonna do a little history lesson on property that a golf course sits on, because the property was not purchased as a golf course. When I first came on board, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Jason Harper was at the, the chair at the time that we purchased the golf course. Is that correct?
I'm gonna say yes.
I just want to be sure that we are perfectly clear, that it was Mr. Harper that brought it to us, because he's very involved with ARC, which he should have been. ARC came to Henry County. They said by twenty-thirty, Henry County will have over four-hundred thousand people. And the court system and judicial system on the square in McDonough could not handle that many people. They could not handle that load. We had everything here. We had the jail started, other pods going on. We've, we've got our government facilities here. We were told, and I'm, I'm assuming it's still true, that it needed, that judicial center had to be in the county seat. This property that the golf course sits on is in the city. Therefore, in order to have a judicial center where everything could be handled with the central location of Henry County, with two exits off of the expressway and able to do that, that is why we did it. It, it's thinking proactively. It's not reacting within eight years or ten years to a situation, oh, my gosh, we don't have any place to put it. Now we've got to go out and find something. That was a poison pill for any politician, and to go out that far in advance. Yes, it's gonna be paid for in the long term. Here's the situation, now I want to be perfectly clear. This board or any future board can put it on the auction block. Now, will it bring what we paid for it at the time? No, but people have, tend to forget, at the time, we were like the seventh fastest growing county in the nation per capita. So at the end of the day, that was looking, that's where the, that's where the four-hundred thousand people came from by the year twenty-thirty. So when that property was purchased, it was purchased being proactive for the future. That's been called everything in the world by the ones that were involved with it. I'm the only one currently on the board that was involved with it. Having given the same information at the same time, whether it hurts me or helps me, it doesn't matter. I would make the same decision. Today, obviously, I would probably say, well, I don't know, you know? Or, or when the bottom fell out, I would probably say, well, it might not have been that great a decision to do it at that time. Maybe it could have been bought a lot cheaper. A lot of maybes there. But we had only the information that we were given at the time, and it, there again. I really appreciate Mr. Harper's leadership. He brought it to us, and it was a five-oh vote to do that. Now, at the end of the day, yes, we got it. This board, any other board, can put it on the auction block. They can put a minimum bid on it, so that we don't lose money on it. If it meets a minimum bid, you can sell it, and then we'll worry about how we're gonna deal with it in the future. The future of Henry County would appreciate the fact that the board looked into and took an opportunity to pick up something where everything would be located within the center of Henry County, in the city limits of McDonough, as it is called for and would have to be. So I just want to be perfectly clear. This has been an election basketball, or football for whatever, or whatever ball you want to call it. But at the end of the day, it was done for the future of Henry County. Not for anybody that sits on this board, not for anybody that sat on the previous board that done it, but that's what it was for. So just want to be perfectly clear that, you know, certain decisions, certain things are done. And, you know, you can, you can, you know, skewer us, put us on the grill, do whatever you want to. But at the end of the day, I feel like we made the right decision. It was done. That's done and over with. And I appreciate the opportunity to bring that up, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Would you be amenable for the chair to make a comment surrounding one of the bit pieces of information that, for clarifications?
I have no, I mean, the chair can make any...
The distinguished gentleman from District Four indicated that at that time, Henry County was the seventh fastest growing county. I would yield to the gentleman that, at that time, based on my knowledge, it was number three.
I, I will, you know, one, three, you know? I was told the other day that one acre, five acres, what difference does it make? I will tell you right now, there's a lot of difference in one acre and five acres, just like, you know, one or three. I mean, at one time, I heard we were number one per capita, and I think Mr. Cash could actually make comment to that. But we've been number one, we've been number seven, we've been number three. I appreciate it. I really do. But I mean, I just wanted to, I wanted to make that clear. I wanted to have it public record, why we did it and what we can do. This board can get rid of it. The next board can get rid of it. Ten boards from now can get rid of it. You know, that's the way it is, but I appreciate it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. Anybody else have any comments this time?
Yeah, Chairman, I'd like my comment. We qualifying started yesterday, and I did qualify. A lot of people said, well, you just ran, and that was true, and it was for a two-year. Excuse me?
There can't be any political campaign statements made.
Well, I'm not making any campaign statements.
I think what he's trying to do is, and I can do this, because I'm not running. Would it be appropriate as to why District Three is running this year instead of not running two years? I tell you what, why don't we let council explain to the public how we moving into a scenario, that we got two commissioners that's running for a four-year term, and we got one, which is District Three.
Well, regardless of who may be running, there was a, a couple of years ago, there was a balanced election resolution that the board passed in order to allow each election cycle to have three commissioners as opposed to the four-two election cycle that previously existed. So that, that's an appropriate statement to make.
He retract what he just said, right?
No, he doesn't need to retract. I just didn't want Commissioner Barn to, and I know people never intentionally do anything, unintentionally make a statement.
I had talked to the chairman about this before I did, but I was just trying to explain the two-year, the four-year term.
The two-year deal. Yes, okay. Does anybody else have any comments? County manager, do you have any comments, sir? County attorney, do you have any comments? Upcoming meetings, we got a meeting March eighteenth at six-thirty PM, regular meeting. We got meetings April the first, April Fool's Day, twenty-fourteenth, nine AM. Tuesday, April the fifteenth, at six-thirty, be a regular meeting. And now, I understand we have several personnel issues, and maybe some litigation, and maybe future acquisition of real estate needs to be discussed in executive session. Having said that, would somebody move that we adjourn into executive session? We have a motion from District Five to enter into executive session. We have a motion from District Three. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. We will now adjourn to executive session to discuss acquisition of real estate pending and/or pending litigation personnel issues. Thank you so much. Does somebody approve an affidavit and resolution? Correct, first thing we need to do is vote to go back into public session. So if somebody move in that direction. We have a motion from District Five to go back into public session. Have a second from District One. Any further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Does somebody move that we approve the affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session? I would like somebody to entertain amending the agenda to add a, a motion to approve a memorandum of agreement with the Calvance Institution University of Georgia for the purpose of administering promotional exams in the Henry County Fire Department. Have a motion to amend the agenda from District Four. Have a second from District Three. Any further discussion, all in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, raise your right hand. We have a motion to approve a memorandum of agreement with the Calvance Institution University of Georgia System of Georgia for the purpose of administering promotional exams in the Henry County Fire Department. This document has been, been hashed around for probably, I'm gonna say, three or four months. Council has presented this to be acceptable, and if, if somebody would move to approve this contract with UGA and authorize the chairman to sign all the necessary documents. Have a motion from District Four. Second from District One. Any further discussion, raise your right hand. Does somebody move we adjourn? Have a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. At this time, earlier in the meeting, we had an issue trying to get clarification. I know I've had, I've had a lot of people quiz me about District Three running for a four-year term, and they just recently run, which is a two-year term. So I would like our county attorney to please explain for the public's benefit as to why we're now doing, we did one term a year ago for a two-year term.
For many years, thank you, Mr. Chair, and for many years, the Henry County Board of Commissioners was on an election cycle whereby you would have four commissioners who would be up for elections.
who would be up for election in one election cycle, and then two years later, you would have two commissioners, and when I say commissioners, I'm including the chairman. And so, you would have election cycles where you have four and two, and with that, the concern was, several years ago, was that if you lose all four experienced commissioners in one election cycle, you probably would have a board that was not that experienced, and that probably would not be in the best interest of the citizens. So, a decision was made, um, a few years ago, to have a balanced election cycle where you have three and three, uh, each election cycle. In order to do that, we had to draft local legislation, had to go to the General Assembly, the governor had to approve and then sign it, and that occurred a couple of years with District Three's position. In order to make that happen, we had to have one commissioner who would sort of volunteer his seat to have a shortened term for, uh, in order to allow everything to settle out. And former Commissioner Randy Stamen, who held the District Three position, volunteered the Commission Three seat for that purpose. And as part of the legislation that went to the General Assembly, um, we shortened the District Three term of office just for one time, and that's, um, in order for a two-year term, in which, when it gets put, placed back on the ballot this year, the, as of January one, twenty-fifteen, it will resume being a four-year term. And so, you have, we had a short period for District Three only, in order to allow us to eventually get to three-on-three balanced election cycle. That's what happened, and I know that's what Commissioner Barron was attempting to say. I know that he was not intentionally trying to say anything that would do anything that would, um, cast doubt on the intention of just making that clarification for the public, so, my apologies if I, um, indicated that, I just didn't want him to unknowingly say something that perhaps could be, um, negatively inferred upon him, but he's perfectly right, the public does have a right to understand this. Um, it's been a couple of years since we've talked about that legislation, so it is a good idea to bring it up now, so that everyone will know why we're doing what we're doing here in the county. Okay?
Anybody have any questions?
Uh, I, I might add to that, that, uh, when this issue was brought up, I was asked if it'd be permissible to speak of what you just spoke of, uh, and the appropriate time would be, obviously, the, uh, on the agenda would be the chairman or commissioner's comment period. Um, hindsight, I don't think there's any, obviously, it wasn't any intent to...
No.
...be politically inclined.
Correct.
Uh, hindsight, third party mediated, uh, mediation, or, or, uh, somebody else should have done it instead of the one that was up. So, uh, having said that, uh, if somebody move, we adjourn.
Forward.
Have a motion District Five, second from District Three, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.